City of Stevens Point Special Common Council Meeting, recorded November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
At six o'clock, we will call the Special Common Council Meeting of the City of Stevens Point to order. Clerk, could we please get a roll?
Christiansen.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Keimer.
Here.
Zarazua.
Here.
Johnson is excused. Niebone.
Here.
Shuda.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Fishler.
Here.
And Morrow will be arriving late.
Yes, and Morrow will be arriving late. All right, so we have the duty of selecting the sixth district alderperson replacement. After that, we will have the immediate swearing in, and then the council will consider the mayoral appointments, which is basically just filling the sixth district vacancies at this point. They will all be up for renewal in April of two thousand twenty-three, because that's what the council decided. The memo and the notes will remain two thousand twenty-four, because that's the regular cycle.
Got it.
But they're all going to be up as any alderman candidate or any alderperson. They are for the aldermatic term. So if any one of us quits today, that term ends today, and so on. But just know that they'll all be up again for reorganization in April with the special election that's going to be held in the sixth district for the sixth district alderperson. Okay?
Yes.
All righty, so the process is such. We have four candidates, and one, two, three, four. They're all here today. We will have them, I'm going to ask you guys to all just sit in the front row, and the council will be able to ask each of you questions. You'll have an opportunity to introduce yourselves and provide us any information you think is relevant outside of the information that's been passed out to all of the other alderpersons, and they're available to the public. Once that question period is go over, and by the way, the questions will come from the council, not the general public. Comments will then be made by any member of the general public, whoever wishes to, and then the council will vote. The voting process will be as such. The clerk will hand out ballots. This is not a secret election, but the ballots will be handed out. You will vote for the candidate of your choice. If any one candidate gets more than fifty percent of the vote in that first round, that person will become the alderperson-elect, and then subsequently sworn in. If there is no alderperson candidate that gets more than fifty percent of the votes, they will have a runoff, so the lowest two will drop out.
Yes.
Or be eliminated, and those two, the two highest vote-getters, will then move on for one final vote from the council until someone gets more than fifty percent. Mark, you have that confused look on your face again.
Again, thank you for noticing that.
Just his look.
When I was appointed last year, I thought it was a secret ballot.
I don't know what you thought, but I confirmed with the city attorney, and it is not a secret ballot.
Because we did do that last time, maybe mistakenly.
Maybe mistakenly, but I confirmed with the city attorney.
That's fine.
And it is not a secret ballot.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Are there any questions from any of the alderpersons before we get started? Are there any questions from any of the candidates before we get started? Whoever is successful gets sworn in and immediately assume the duties of that sixth district vacancy, which is finance, public works, bike ped, and joint municipal court, but we already had that one. So the two tonight will be finance and public works. Was that a question, or are you just fixing hair?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a question, or are we just fixing hair?
I'm fixing hair.
Okay, so if I could have the alderperson candidates come up, you don't have to sit next to each other, you want to be on every other seat. And then what we'll do is we'll have everybody introduce themselves, and then we'll move into the alderman or alderperson questions. So let's start on this end. Introduce yourself and tell us why you're running, and we'll just move on down the line.
All right, I'm Sarah Berna. Nice to meet you all. I decided to run. Public service was always kind of something I wanted to do, just not maybe so soon, but the opportunity came up, so I decided to throw my hat in the ring. I want to improve communication with the council and the citizens and make some great choices for our city.
I'm Dave Pousans, and the reason that I would like to be council member is because I've been a part of this committee for a long time and have been on the other side, and I feel now that it's time that I put a little bit of what I've learned, experience-wise in banking and management and just personal life in the area into effect for the city of Stevens Point. Been a resident here for a long time and have been very proud to stay at Stevens Point. And...
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cindy Plata, and I'm a mother. I have a ten-year-old son, and I'm also a wife and married to Aaron Plata. And I used to work at Century for a long time. I was there for nine and a half years, and then I left that job to be a staff member with my son. So I've kind of done the best of both worlds, done the career thing, done the mom thing, and all really good opportunities for me to grow. Just recently, I worked for the Point Fellowship, the Unitarian Universalist congregation, for a couple of years, and within like six months to a year, I was doing almost all of the work for that church. I was the representative between the Stevens Point congregation and board of the Conde Leck. I was the administrative assistant. I set up church services every Sunday, and I took down, and I worked leading meetings and taking care of all the donations and entering them with the software. I was doing all of those things. But recently, I did end up leaving that job, so I'm kind of looking for a new opportunity, and I had many messages from friends saying, tagging me in this opening and saying, I think you should do this. I recently had a friend of mine invite me around the nation to maybe do some part-time work at the school district, and I think something that he said are very relevant to this position as well, he said that Cindy has an infectious positive attitude and is highly invested in the opportunity to help be involved in a productive economy. She's easy to talk to and is very empathetic. She does a very good job listening to and advocating for needs of others. Through my experience with Cindy, I've found her to be a responsible, ethical, and honest person. She's great at working with kids and adults and always strives to be an awesome employee. And that was from Stephen Duckert at Five and Six. I'm sure if I asked him, he would also say that I could use it today. So that's just a little bit about me and why. And I also wanted to say that I feel like I have good ideas, and I would love to talk more with my neighborhood and get to know more people in my neighborhood and see if we could have some neighborhood gatherings or walk party or, I don't know, something like that. And I thought this would be a good way for me to find out what the rules are and how we can do more things, because I just feel like I don't know enough people in my neighborhood, and I thought this would be a good way to meet everybody.
Thank you. Jason?
Jason Barrett, I grew up here. I have a six-year-old and a four-year-old. I recently moved to the sixth district, well, not recently, about four years ago. Spent a lot of time working with Jeremy Slawinski about problems. Some of the issues, I shouldn't say problems, but a lot of the issues in the neighborhood seem to come to me, and they look to me as an approachable conduit to them. So I reached out to Jeremy, worked with him quite a few times, and when I heard that he had left and the position had been filled, I was relieved because of the nice policeman. But now that he's moved on, if you want to make change, you got to get involved. So I was involved, but now I might as well get involved in a firsthand manner. So I spent some time in Chicago. I spent some time in Milwaukee. While in Milwaukee, I was the president of a condo board, sixty-two units. Every year, we had some issues. I got, when I got involved, I thought that I could be more physically responsible, I was able to lower costs, maintain condo fees, which made each unit more sellable, et cetera. So when I sold my unit and moved up here, so I have a little bit of experience in finance, working with several people to a common denominator, common goal, and hopefully make the right decisions, so.
Thank you. All right, we'll do this in order. Should we go right to left or left to right?
Flip the coin.
Well, Mark, you're District One. You always go first, so let's start on this end. Let's start on this end.
So thank you all for being here. I know it's not easy to do kind of like an interview in front of council, so thanks for being here and hopefully it's not too nerve-wracking for you all. One question I do have is how you view representative government and how you might perceive your role in that.
I feel like my role would be a conduit between the people and you, you know, everybody sitting here, just really being their ears and then their voice, helping their concerns or questions be relayed. So really, I see it just as a conduit, you know, me for them to, you know, the board.
Okay, Dave?
I have a question again, I want to make sure.
How you view your role within representative government?
I'm not a wild hothead right off the bat. I think things through. I listen to a lot of things. I look at this right off the bat, that pretty much whoever gets this position for the next four months is going to be really in a heavy-duty learning process and needs to come in like a dry sponge and absorb as much as you can to understand what's going on in the city and how I can fit my place into there. I've been involved in the community. I've been an honest person the whole time. I've got a lot of people loans, a lot of people in this community I've worked with financially through credit, through the process of saving, through getting into a home. Other people, I have worked in communities with the apartment association. I was on the board of that for ten years, and we fought against the city a couple of times, losing a couple of times and winning a couple of times. And that's just the way it goes. I'm a person that not loses grudge if it doesn't go my way. See, now you don't have to worry tonight if anything goes wrong. But I just feel that this is my time. I'm sixty-four, almost sixty-five. I've had great experiences in life, working at various places, as you can see from the letter that I put together, and I feel that I can do a good job here.
Thank you. Cindy?
Yes, so I feel similar to Sarah in that I've been representing my neighborhood and, you know, their thoughts and feelings on certain issues, and I would really need to, you know, I might have my own beliefs, but I need to listen to what they're saying and follow, you know, because there might be a difference of opinion there, and I need to hear that, listen to their experiences, their feelings. You know, similar example with the city of Stevens Point was about the Southside District was, that two sides where people were leaning completely opposite directions. Mike Lisa did a great job in, you know, helping bring people together and have more meetings and find a common. I feel like, you know, all of us, we would be working to do that, to help people find some common ground and see what we can do.
Jason?
I guess this role to me would be a voice for the people, a conduit. In my neighborhood, in the sixth district, there's everything, families, people living in with young children, so people who've been there for forty years. So there's a lot of different opinions on what needs to be done, you know? A bus driver drives too fast for a twenty-one-year-old young family, doesn't drive fast enough. So you kind of have to take that. You know, as a small business owner and in sales, you really have to listen, you know? So I think I do a pretty good job of listening, and I'm approachable. And so far, the opinion is, you know, like I said, even with working with Jeremy before, I seem to be the person that was going to maybe my personality is strong enough that we're being approachable, and I'm not afraid to reach out, but it's an important position as a voice for the people, and especially just the people in your district as well as, you know, citywide. So hopefully I can take those experiences of what I had last year, being a fifty-year-old who started a family late and kind of lived on both sides of the ball. So I had a lot of good experience in the government that you have to bring to the table, so.
Thank you. And if it's all right, we'll cycle through the first person, just so nobody has an advantage of having an extra four minutes or five minutes to think about it. So that's kind of the process that we've done in forums and things like that. So if everybody's okay with it, that's what we'll do. Dave, you'll answer the next question first.
I'm going to go to Sean.
Move on. We'll come back to you at the end, Sean.
He doesn't have a question.
Just wondering if we want their names again, just for Sean's benefit?
Sure, if everybody just wants to go through and give your names again for the benefit of alderperson Morrow, who was a little bit late coming in this evening.
I'm Sarah Berna.
Dave Pousans.
Cindy Plata.
I'm Jason Barrett.
All right.
My two questions are, since deciding to submit your name for this appointment, have you reached out to people within your district or heard anything to let them know that you were doing this? You know, basically taking action upon the idea of being a conduit? And then secondly, if you are not appointed here tonight, do you intend to run? Are you interested enough in this position that you might run again in the spring?
Okay, yes, I've already reached out. As a matter of fact, at my cul-de-sac, we've already addressed the situation that popped up, that people were angry about that I knew. The house next to me had burned down, and the lot was never really fully taken care of afterward, and there was tall weeds and everything and stuff. And I live where I didn't see it because there's trees, but the rest of the people around the cul-de-sac could see all that, and they all complained to me about it. And I brought it up with the mayor in my meeting, and he got me to the person in charge of that department, and we'll see what happens now. But yes, I have been a friend of Jeremy's for a long time, too, signed his voting registration forms and started his petitions numerous times. I look at this as really whoever gets this tonight, basically on December first, is turning right around and having to get the paperwork together to get for the fall. So yes, I would be in it for that timeframe, too. And I have a lot of people in the community that are friends of mine or business associates and would have no problem at all reaching out to find out if there are other concerns or anything, or listening, because I know that this position, basically a lot of it is, you just get a lot of phone calls. And you need to take those calls and treat the person with respect. They may not get the right answer that they want all the time, but that's how life goes.
So I was just made aware of a technical difficulty that I should have caught right on, because everyone here knows that when someone speaks, you have to be at the lectern. Apparently, the audio is not coming across the Zoom.
That's right.
I apologize. That is one hundred percent on me. So you're going to get a little exercise tonight. As you speak, I need you to come up to the lectern.
Break into circle.
Sorry, and we can understand, they can understand it a little bit, but apparently, yeah, they can't hear all the answers, so we'll try it this way for a while. Sorry.
It's okay. So I decided today to fill out the paperwork, and it was about two-thirty or three o'clock. So no, I did not have time to run around my neighborhood yet. What was the other question? Oh, do I, yes, I would, I think I would plan to run in the spring if the opportunity arose again. But yeah, you were just saying that you were going to have elections again, so I think this is something that I would plan to apply for again. You know, just the first time coming here, you know, not really sure what it's all about and what it all involves, and, but this has been really eye-opening already, like hearing from my neighbors and everybody about all of the duties and everything, so.
Yeah, and I think I met with all the candidates, so that you understand that the term is through April, you'll have to run again, and as little as a month, start the campaign process again. But it'll help get your feet wet, and if you're like four months into it, like, no, I don't want this anymore. It's okay, you have an out. Jason?
I guess the question is, more or less, do I have a relationship with my neighborhood? I guess those are the people that would be voting for me, and yes, I mean, I do see several parents at the bus stop who have voiced concerns. Once again, I was the conduit to go to Jeremy. I've also been in neighborhood parties where I know a lot of different people in that part of the neighborhood, which is not my immediate, you know, neighbor. So I also am a member of the country club, which a lot of those members fall in. So there's a lot of discussion that happens about the city of Stevens Point. Now, if I was on this board with this table, working with you guys, I would have an actual voice instead of just locker room or tavern talk. So, yeah, you know, like someone mentioned, it's going to be a lot of learning, you know? I consider myself kind of a fast learner, where I'm fly. I was in medical sales for fifteen years, which, operating in the OR, which wasn't always predictable, so you had to make pivots and turns, and my brain kind of works like that. And, you know, playing athletics, I was a member of a team, so all-team sports, so I know how to work well with others, if that makes sense, so.
The second question was, do you intend to run again? Or if you are not appointed today, are you interested in this role enough that you might run?
Yes, absolutely. I'm, I plan on staying in my neighborhood for a long time. You know, I'm not looking to make a move. My kids have just started MacDill as a first grader in four K, so they like it there. So I'm here for six, seven, eight years at least, you know, I guess, while they finish that school. And I guess the question would be, how well would I work with you guys? You know, like I said, I can't say I'm going to guarantee run, but if you guys, you know, if we don't have a good working relationship, and I don't think that's a benefit to the city, then I would have to opt out, obviously. But I don't think that's the issue, but I want to be realistic in this time of huge divides. It seems like our country is constantly dividing. I can't imagine that you guys all agree on everything as well. So, you know, so I think that, yes, but my plan is to continue on, you know, as long as the district would have me, so.
Thank you.
I have talked with lots of my neighbors in the Howard Avenue neighborhood, and they were very enthused and happy that I'm putting my hat in the ring, and I definitely would try to run in April again.
Cindy, you'll be starting the next one.
Hi, simple question. What makes Stevens Point special to you? And if it is special, is that the reason you're running, or is it because of something that you see the city needs to change or do differently?
It's a big question. Stevens Point is really special to me. I came here from a small town. I grew up in Motoma, and, you know, so it was like, I started college here, and that was my first experience living in a different place. And I just, right away, took a liking to it, and I loved it here right away. I loved all the different seasons. I really love how everyone is usually kind to everyone else, you know, just smiling and talking to people on the street. I worked downtown for a little while, and that was really great, getting to know people down there. I worked at ninety FM in college, and I met a lot of business owners that way. That was really exciting, and that helped me really like form relationships in the community. And, you know, and then when I graduated, I started working at Century immediately after I graduated and worked my way up there. And so, yeah, the, this whole city became very special to me. And then, you know, as you know, I got married here, and I have my son, and he is also at MacDill. And, yeah, I just, when I go other places, it just doesn't feel like home, but this place really does. I don't know. What was the whole question again, just so I can make sure I answered it all?
First question you did very well on. Is there something that, the reason for your running?
Oh, maybe that might, that might want to change. I feel like I'm not as involved as I should be on things and that I kind of have missed out what's going on sometimes in the local government, and I feel like this would be a good way for me to get more involved and just be more cognizant of what is going on. My husband and I have been very busy, but we, we just feel like there's something missing, and I think, and he's always been pretty vocal about his thoughts and beliefs, and I feel like I can really help out that way.
Yep.
I came here from a big city. I came here from St. Louis when I was twelve years old, so it was very different than the way I grew up. So that became very special and very unique. It was, you know, Stevens Point's made up of a bunch of, you know, really different neighborhoods, as I kind of put in my presentation. So it's special. I think that it offers everything that a big city has, but in a very smaller diameter, which is really fantastic for children. Where I see kind of this world going is there's a lot of people working from home, there's a lot of people with mass access from big cities. That's going to affect us, and I think we have to be prepared for that. And I think we need forward-thinking, I think we need to, with those people come crime, come new advantages, both good and bad, I think, you know, revenue into the city, et cetera. And so I've always had an interest, you know, my children are here, they're here for a while, so I want to make sure that, you know, if I can, if I can bring a little bit of big-city thoughts into, you know, into this committee, then as a positive, or maybe as a negative, too, because this isn't a big city yet, but, so, yeah, it's important to me. It's a very special city, and I see it becoming even more special, so.
Does that answer? Yep. Sorry.
So I was born and raised in Stevens Point. Children, husband, decided to start my family here. So Stevens Point is very important to me. Family members always, you know, kind of servicing the city in one form or another. So it is, I'm here for the long term, you know, I'm not going anywhere. I love Stevens Point. And I just feel like my choice for running and wanting to run is just to, because there is a lot of decisiveness in the world today, and with government, citizens, whatnot, and just to try to bridge that gap with listening, you know, letting people be heard, essentially, I guess is the reason why I decided to run, and just to try to get everybody on the same page, know what's going on with your city, so that's, thanks.
Okay, Dave?
I came to the university here to go to school and then met my wife, girlfriend at that time. My wife then ended up getting a teaching job in the area, and I was still in school at the time, so that kind of sucked me into being in the Stevens Point area for a considerable long period of time. After that, then I just jumped in and like at Rainbow Falls, and first park manager, the first day that that went open, I changed from a construction outfit into the park manager outfit and had to worry about safety, staffing, and running of a park. I'm good at picking things up and going with it. I feel that I've raised my kids here, my wife taught here, she's still teaching here, and this is my community that I've always called home, ever since high school. I feel that a strong suit for me and what I would kind of like to help with down the road is housing. We have a really bad housing situation here. After being involved in mortgage lending for over twenty years, I've learned a lot of the realtors, a lot of the builders. There's builders out there that, not all of them, want to build the four- or five-hundred-thousand-dollar houses. It's finding them and trying to find plans to work and land to do that, too. I've got connections with various places and things I know about grant programs for people who are like first-time homebuyers to get money. The city used to have something a long time ago, but that disappeared with Funding Cap Services has quite a few. WIDA, there's a lot of opportunities out there for the community people who are in need of it if they just know the right angles to go about it. And I feel that with my representation on that, I think that I can help considerably. Also, I'm wondering, has there ever been an election for a district where there's been four candidates? It always seems like I'm always just voting for one person that's there.
Yeah, I know, remember, there's been, there's been three, but I don't know that we've had a four in recent history.
All right, okay. And they're all, I've been listening tonight, they're all good candidates.
And ironically, when Jeremy said he wasn't going to run again, it was like pulling teeth to try and find someone, so I'm excited. Where are we at?
Mary, next question. Mary, next question.
Your last one. So next question?
I think it comes to me.
That goes to you now, yes.
Just a couple of weeks ago, we passed the 2023 budget, and we were, I hate to use the term warned, but we learned that the next year, the challenges to meet the city's responsibilities are going to be tough. We can only raise property taxes so high. What do you see as the, how do you see the city making its way through these, these challenges? What, what do you think would be a priority for the city to do should we face some serious decisions in terms of what we can afford?
Boy, you don't pull any punches, do you?
And?
You guys haven't, I mean, they've seen the budget.
And?
You've never been involved in a process before.
And how do you really feel about urban planning?
That's a trick question, by the way. You don't answer that one.
You don't have to answer that. No, I mean, we, every month, we come to meetings and face hard decisions. Where, where, where we're going to put our resources. And increasingly, as prices go up and supply chain issues are still a problem, these issues aren't going to go away. And sooner or later, we're going to have to say, we can't afford this anymore. So, I mean, where do you see the kind of challenges that, that we're going to have to face? What do you, what do you think they're going to be?
Well, I mean, I think that's a, there's a lot of moving pieces to that, you know? Some people, you can raise my taxes at whatever you want. It doesn't matter. I mean, he's talking about people buying $450,000 homes. Sure, there's people that are going to move in, and that's a lot of property tax. Or you can annex more properties in the town of Hall if you need to, et cetera. But I don't think that's what makes up Stevens Point. You know, the, the housing crisis, or, you know, I don't really see that yet. I think there's a lack of apartments, et cetera, or maybe even affordability apartments. But I don't have enough experience to, to offer you a solution to what you guys are working on, you know? Raising taxes, that's, seems to always be the answer. But will we lose people? You know, will that drive people away from Stevens Point, which we don't want? Can we bring bigger businesses, but not too big here? Can we, you know, there's been rumor of Costco forever. Would that get more people into this city as a drive through or a place to stop on their way up to their mansions up north? I don't know. I mean, you know, I know that this is a thorough fair, you know? You see it on a Friday afternoon when you're trying to get to Culvers to get some ice cream for your screaming kid, you know? But, yeah, I mean, I think that's a committee of very smart people to try to not to red flag even someone like me who's, you know, I don't want to say I'm barely making it, but I'm, I'm happy in Stevens Point. I don't, I'm not looking for a reason to leave. And, and most of us, I think, in my community can probably afford a little bit of a tax increase. But, but why? You know, what are we getting from that? Are we getting safer streets? Are we getting more police officers? I don't know. You know, that's where I think, the most information I've gotten in four years was when Dean posted that information on the referendum. You know, it, it can be very confusing to someone who doesn't pay attention to that. Or you're talking to, I don't know if Kevin is your uncle or what, you know, but he's on the news saying, you know, don't make this down the two lanes. But then you read a study, say, well, that's safer, and there's less, you know, it's just, there's a lot of information, and I'm sorry, I'm getting off base. I don't, I don't know the solution to that. But it, it definitely is, I think, to keep, keep the small town feel and maybe find a way to cater to more people coming. I mean, and that's what I think, I think you guys are doing, whatever you're doing, you're doing it right, because it seems like there's a lot more people and there's a lot less housing available. And there is a nice mix of $159,000 houses up to the million dollar houses. You know, there's, it seems to be a community for everybody at this point. So, I don't know, I don't have an answer for you. But I know it's going to be a challenge. Every year seems to be a challenge. In my business, there seems to be a surplus right now. A surplus of goods that were promised two years ago. So those are not increasing in price. That may buy us some time in the next two years. And, you know, I'm in apparel and other stuff. So that, you know, like I said, if those prices aren't going up at a wholesale level, then they're probably not going to go up much at a retail level. So that's going to keep people shopping, hopefully. But also, it's kind of like letting them know that, you know, right now, you see the news, and they're afraid to go to the store, I think. But if they did go to the store and realize that the shirt hasn't gone up that much, that they would shop. But, I don't know. I guess good luck to you, you three guys on this question.
I guess, I guess I'm just trying to see what the.
Sweaty.
What do you think the challenges are going to be? I didn't mean it to be quite that bad.
I unfortunately don't have the answers to for budget things right now. But with anything, you can look at household, government, anything, there's tough decisions right now in the climate today that have to be made. And not everybody would be happy with some of those. But I would hope, you know, prioritize, prioritize what people do want. And again, back to the listening, you know, putting that forward. So, yeah, sorry.
If anybody says they have an answer.
No.
They're either not telling the whole truth, or they're in the wrong chair.
What are the challenges?
There's a chair in Washington DC that I want you to have instead.
Well, I think I'm going to fall into the same line of that, too. That's a toughie. I know that, like tourism is one area. When I was in the waterpark business, we copied a lot from the Wisconsin Dells. And one of the things that was kind of cool about the Dells was they were all fighting each other to get the business. But there was a committee that was put up of all of them, because they figured if they could make the pie bigger, then their piece of the pie would be bigger. And there's a lot to that. As far as budgets go, you've only got so much money, you can only tax increase. There's just going to be some tough decisions. And the people are just going to have to stand up and just have to make those tough decisions. There's really no way around it, unless you can make money.
Wish I could.
Well, I wish I knew more about what was on the budget, because then I would have more answers for you. But what I can tell you is that I learn quickly. I'm a good listener. And I can have some good ideas sometimes. And I'm good at bringing people together and helping people compromise. I worked at Century. The first year I was there, I was a secretary slash administrative assistant in Standard Business Products. You know, that first year, that's what I was doing. And then right away, I moved into transportation. I became an underwriting tech. And for large fleet writing, and we helped write insurance for motor carriers that were 100 units or more. And then after that, I moved into being a fleet tech. And then I became an underwriter in nonfleet. And then I started working in compliance and forms and doing system, system testing. So I moved up quickly. By the last year I was there, I had trained someone just out of college to basically know everything that I knew in one year. And she was hired full time. And she took over my job when I left. So I really think that, yes, just being aware of the information and using my prior experience would be very helpful. I worked with independent agents. And so you had to be really good at those relationships, because they didn't have to bring the quotes to you. They could bring the quotes to a lot of other companies. And they could skip yours if they didn't like you. So I had to work really hard on relationships. I worked with agents all over the country. I traveled a few times out east and to the south. But I also had agents out west and just all over. So I've worked with a lot of different people. And hopefully, that is where I can help with that sort of thing.
Go easier. How would you solve all the world's problems?
Back in 1942.
How do you get peace in, how do you get peace in Ukraine?
There you go.
That's a tough question.
So maybe my question is easier. Just wondering, how much time do you anticipate being in Alder will require?
I anticipate it'll be quite a bit of time. Exactly what, I'm not quite sure. But I'm a go getter. And when I sign up to do something, I do it with everything I have. So whatever time that may be, I'm willing to put in.
Well, I've come to the understanding that every Monday, might as well just count it for tonight, no more Monday night football games, no more nothing. It's just the way it goes. I have retired for the most part. Do have some part time work here and there. But whatever it would take to do, I would do it. I got a chance to review some of the information that was sent to us last week. I didn't go over the budget with a fine tube comb or anything. But I would put in whatever times needed and really answering the questions and concerns of the people in the district, too, besides just the paperwork.
That's a question I was hoping that could get answered tonight, because I'm not really sure. I know that on Mondays, there are meetings, and they could be anywhere from 30 minutes to six hours long, is what I heard.
Fourth and fifth Mondays of the month.
What's that? I didn't hear, but I heard they're mostly the first, second, third Mondays of the month. And then I assumed a lot of the other time, it would be answering the emails and phone calls. And so, yeah, I don't have a specific idea, but I kind of was thinking five to 10 hours a week, maybe.
Along with that, whatever it takes, I'm sure some meetings last half an hour. I'm sure meetings last hours. I can't imagine you're here more than you need to be. This is, is not a hobby for me. This is not something I'm just like, hey, let's try this out. It's something that I've been interested in. I, you know, it's something that I take everything in my life pretty seriously. So this is another one of those steps that if you can be an important conduit in the community, then it's, then it's worth the time and whatever time that takes, I guess. So.
All right. Thank you. I think most of you or all of you have talked about the learning curve in terms of just preparing for this role or taking on this role. And I guess my question is, how will you go about learning about how the city works and its process and acclimating yourself to this? So just the different ways you'll go about that.
Well, we'll start with getting involved. It would mean having to get down here in the courthouse, learning and talk to names of the people running the departments, learning what goes on in those departments, especially in the committees that I would be involved in. Then it would be follow through as far as paperwork at home, reading, trying to dig into things. I'm probably a little bit behind on the South Side project. I know I've heard about it and everything. I know there's a lot of concerns about things and stuff. But that would have, I would have some catching up to do on things like that. But I'm willing to do it. I've got the time to do it.
Sorry, I forgot the question.
Just how would you go about preparing for this job?
Yes. No, I think first thing is I would talk to the other elder persons. I was actually thinking about reaching out to a few of you beforehand. But then I, my husband is currently in India for two weeks for work. And so I've been very busy and didn't realize that the interview is tonight. And so, but yes, I would love to reach out to a few of you and find out what it is that you do, so that I can learn from experienced, experienced members of the council. And, yeah, get some tips and information from you on how you do things, instead of trying to reinvent the wheel. Yeah, also, just talking to, you know, the people that reached out to me, that said, hey, I think you'd be good at this. You know, I'll ask them what their thoughts and feelings are and get that from them.
Alan's got some great pictures of the Taj Mahal, too. So if anybody's looking at ideas for their mausoleum, follow him on Facebook. I think I am prepared for this job. So preparing for the job, I mean, I'm 50 years old. I've had many, many different sales jobs. I've been in many, many scenarios which involve changing, pivoting, teamwork. Every day is a new experience with children. You know, I'm learning that. So in terms of being prepared and how to work with others, I think I'm there. I don't need to be taught, you know, how to work with a team and to come up with the best solution. There may be some mentorship where, you know, to make a change, who do you go to? Who wears that hat? Who has the best responsibility or relationship, et cetera. But I think, I think we're probably all prepared in, in life, you know, in terms of getting ready to sit down and start to make some changes, or not changes if they don't need to be, but make decisions, I guess. So, other than that, of course, something new comes on my plate, you have to learn. You know, you have to practice, learn, talk with people, understand it. You know, like I said, this isn't just a, this wouldn't be just a hobby for me. Like, you know, to understand the South Side project, I would probably need somebody to tell me why, you know, why we're making these decisions, et cetera. And, and I think we're all capable of making a decision for our district, so to speak, as well as, you know, I think we have an understanding and relationships. We wouldn't be here if we didn't. So.
My first goal would be to just be a sponge, soak up whatever information I could from you all. I do have my father to help me to know where to go, who to call, if, you know, needs arose with that, if it's not quite sure, you know, who takes care of what in the city. And just again, learning from you guys on the council currently.
Thank you. Thank you. In all sincerity, really appreciate your stepping up. It's a credit to you, credit to the community. I appreciate it. Thank you, Alder Dalton, who asked the most important question, I think, because, you know, our purpose tonight is to put someone in so that the seat isn't empty for these months. But the real choice will be made in April. So it was important for us to hear about your readiness to, to put your name on the ballot, because that's, that's where, you know, the decision properly will be made, and finally will be made. So one of you talked about making good decisions for the community. So based on your sense of our agenda, you know, not, not any particular issue, but just the, the kinds of things that you see us, where judgment comes in, what, what kinds of things does, does the community look to us and our decisions for? You know, what, how do you view those, those decisions we're making for the community? And what they need to do, how we can help?
I don't, I'm not sure I understand the question. Could you kind of sum up?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
We meet every month, we vote. And I guess, in a way, I'm asking kind of for like an overview of the votes we take. And, you know, what, how you view the influence that we have on this community and its future, the, you know, the, the value we provide. the, you know, the value we provide in serving the community, what, you know, we make a lot of decisions. What do you view as, you know, what, how are we kind of steering the community? I mean, I've got my ideas of what, you know?
No, 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 no. Are you asking for an evaluation of the council?
No, 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 no. You know, I mean, I don't know, I've been up here a while and we deal with a lot of things. And I'm asking about what matters. I'm asking about the, you know, connecting, you know, the votes we take to what the community needs to be decided, you know? What's the, what's your sense of the role we play, of what's important about our decisions? What, what good do they provide? What are, you know, what are we sort of doing as a service by, you know, with all these votes we take?
Okay. Maybe a little more philosophical than we generally have, but answered to the best of your ability, I guess.
500 words in an essay, please.
Well, I definitely think what you do adds value to the community. I can see that you all work really hard and you are asking really good questions here on the panel. And I don't know, to be honest, I have not watched these meetings before, which my friend asked me today. He's like, have you watched the meetings before? And I'm like, oh, no. But, so I will definitely start doing that, because I would like, like I said, I would love to be more involved and then I would understand more about what each of you do. You know, I understand the basics of it, but, yeah, I don't think I can say much more
Well, I guess you're an essential part of the community. It's a democracy, so you've all been elected, well, you know, whether you run contested or not in your district, so the community that you're representing trusts you to make the right decisions, so you're essential. I don't know how many stalemates you've had on this community. I don't know how many really in-depth conversations. I don't know how many people walk and go, gosh, they just weren't listening to me, you know? That's stuff that I guess one of us will learn, but we have to assume that you're making the most financial responsible decisions for our community. And I'm assuming you want to get reelected and you don't want people to dislike you and talk bad about you. So I think, I hope that you're doing it, you know? Like I said, we don't, I don't think we're privy to a lot of information. I don't watch the live stream either, but maybe that's something that could change, too. Maybe, you know, creating an interest in what this committee decides, you know? Just coming off an election year, midterm year, obviously there's a lot of press and information that gets passed along and shared, but, you know, maybe that's a, that's a spark that can be ignited where the every, I don't know, every one of the districts creates a game and they root for their team. I don't know. But, you know, there's a lot of ways to make this interesting and District One is probably very different from Mr. Schuett's District Eight and, you know, he probably has needs that feels more important than your needs, et cetera, and it's working together. So I think that my, the importance of me is number one, security and safety, you know? That seems to be a real hot topic issue, you know? And then obviously fiscally responsible and maintaining this lifestyle in this city as well as improving it, you know, creating opportunities for people that are coming into this community. You know, there's so much that can be done that really, your shoulders, your legs must be weak, because you're kind of making all of these decisions for everybody. And you could probably stand at Hilltop and do a survey and nine out of 10 people who are trying to get home on a Friday afternoon at 3:00, that takes 45 minutes to get up the hill to take a ride on Country Club Drive, they would probably say, what are you guys doing? You know? But, and maybe that could have been a part of an information that would have said, hey, this is going to take a long time and this is what's going to happen and we're going to have diagrams and et cetera. You know, so maybe that's some things that you guys could do better, is maybe you just kind of share that if you haven't, but, you know, or create routes that aren't going to upset, you know, that, you know, please take a right through Park Ridge and cut around because, you know, we're going to be down to, et cetera, you know?
For the record, that's the state, not us.
That is actually State Department of Transportation doing that project, not the city.
Right, anyhow, but anyhow, so I understand that, you know, I haven't heard anybody say, let's, let's get those people out of there, you know? So, yes, like I said, I feel you're essential and so far, it seems to be working out, so.
So I have watched some of the live streams you guys had for your meetings and that, and I do feel this, this adds value to the city for you guys all representing, representing each district, those citizens' voices. It's tough. I've read Facebook comments, I've seen comments out there, and I understand and it's tough. You guys are doing the best you can. Not everybody will always be pleased with the decisions, but again, if they're made with those citizens in mind and with what is the best for the city, you know, it's a tough job, but I'm up for it.
I've attended some of the council meetings over the years regarding various things that were going on in the community. Things have gone, you know, when I came to Stevens Point in the late 70s, the east side of town was Fleet Farm, the old Fleet Farm. There was nothing beyond that. Without the city, there would still be nothing out there. The city was the ones that got involved with entrepreneurs and built that area. In attending some meetings, I do like the setup of this better, where you're staring at the people. One time I went to a council meeting and I was talking on a subject and there were people on their phones, not even turning to look at the speakers, just, it was very rude. I don't think that any of you people, though, who were there at the time, would have to look at the backs of your heads and see. And I know there's battles, like with Plover, too. When Menards went down to Plover instead of being on the east side, that was a big sticking point for the city of Stevens Point back then. But there are a lot of positives. There's a lot of people that don't really know what goes on here and really probably don't care until something goes wrong. Then they're going to want it. What you'd love to be able to do is fly below the radar for the whole time, that everything goes right and it's just the way you want it. But that's not the way it is in life. And I think you guys do a very good job and I'd like to be a part of that.
The last one. Just a little over a year ago, I was sitting in the same chair as you are. I was applying and wanted to be considered for an open position, so I can kind of empathize. Thank you for putting your names in and throwing your name, yourself into this fray. Just to look ahead, what you may be about to experience, you have in just a little over three week, two, three weeks, you'll be pulling out nomination papers. Those of you, even if you're not appointed tonight, if you're planning on, on running in April, will be taking out nomination papers in December. You'll have till the first week of January to get your signatures in. If more than two of you decide to run, if there's three, then you can be in the same boat I was. You'll have a primary in February, so you can start drilling through the frozen ground to put your yard signs in. Just more fun than anyone should have. Then if you're, make it through the primary, you get to run again in April, which, because then this is just until that April, you'll get to pull out papers again the following December, so you can do the same thing a year later. So just be aware that it is a lot. There's a lot of learning to get done in a short amount of time. That being said, I applaud you for putting your, your foot forward and I think we have some tough choices to make, so I think we have some good people to choose from. I guess my question tonight would be, I think a lot of times the best predictor of the future is the past, and I'm kind of curious what, this is a unique kind of a, of a operation in that you have a group of people making group decisions. And it's different than operating as an individual. It's different than communicating just as, as one person. And so I'd be curious, what past experience each of you have as part of a board or a commission or a committee where there's group decisions being made, because that's kind of a, a unique process in and of itself.
And just a point of clarification, depending on how many candidates there are, there is not a set primary. It may or may not happen. If there's three candidates, we are not required to have a primary. The council will make that decision.
First and foremost, I have a wife, so there is a committee at home.
That's a dictatorship. You don't get any say.
All my life, I've been on team sports. I've been the team captain in high school. I went on to be a team captain in, in, in football in college. I've been in sales, which have been a part of team sales. It's been individual sales, et cetera, everything from selling copiers door to door to, to be in an, in an operating room where you're working with several different people to make sure that this person on the table is your primary concern. I wrote a little bit of experience. I was a condo board president for about six years in my condo down in Milwaukee, so that was a, a committee of five, so not quite as broad as this, but, you know, it was once a month meeting to talk about, about a 400, $390,000 budget, not, obviously not comparable to what you're doing, but it, it does give you some experience in making sure that at least your, your neighbors and your, you know, your fellow condo dwellers in your committee are happy with you, that you're doing a good job, so. And there's a lot of feedback and opinion that comes with even something as minimal as, as that. I didn't consider it a minimal job. I was, I wanted to do the best that I could, so that is probably the most experience I have with other people's money, if that makes sense. Obviously, in my home, it's, you know, it's my money, but when you're dealing with other people's money, that's, it's a huge responsibility. You don't want to take that lightly. So that was pretty recently. That was about six years ago. So since then, I've moved to Stevens Point and right now I'm in a small business with a partner, which, you know, who has a family as well, so that's another kind of decision-making process that we don't take lightly as well. You know, we're, we're feeding seven mouths between our company, you know? So, and that's, that's a partnership as well, you know? What's the best decision moving forward for the money that, and the revenue that we bring in, so. Did I answer her?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not trying to be that person that Dave was talking about, looking on their phone, but I'm trying to solve the Zoom problem. We're, we're having an issue with the video not working and now I'm stuck. I'm afraid I'm going to have to reboot, but I think I got one more thing to try, so while I'm doing that.
All right. So I work in healthcare, so every day it's a team approach. In my past positions in healthcare, sometimes of the greatest importance, you know, the most important thing, someone's health. So it's a whole team, used to working as a team every day. And being a part of the team, I'm a good communicator, but I'm also a very good listener. So I think that's just as important when you're on a team, to be a listener, too, so.
I, too, am married with two grown daughters and that is, I'm always on the low end of that deal and have been for years and have learned to live with it. I've kind of learned, too, from working in the banking field and stuff, too, that there is a lot more female employees than there are male employees. And I adapted very well, and to be honest, guys, I learned a lot more from the women than I probably would have from the guys. I've been on quite a few different committees over the years. I was on the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board for three years back when I worked at Rainbow Falls. I was on some housing committees with the county and with WEDA, first-time homebuyer When I did manage Rainbow Falls, it was involved every day, safety, friendliness. You had to win that customer over because they were going to tell somebody else. So you had to be involved with your staff through the whole day, making sure everything went the way it was supposed to and that the customers had the greatest time of their life. On the mortgage end, there was a lot of times where I was jumping from so-and-so's got a bad credit score and trying to deal with that, to all of a sudden appraisal doesn't come out and having to deal with the realtors and the buyers and sellers, to inspections, to anything imaginable. And it was all, could be 10 or 15 things in one day. And it was learning to cope and it wasn't as much team there, but in the end, it was somebody's house that was involved and some place for someone to live, so it mattered considerably to me. In sports, I was never on a losing team. I played in a variety of sports throughout all the years. I'm still in touch with a lot of my teammates. We're good friends just because we knew we could count on each other. And if I'm elected to this, I hope that you can all count on me.
When I worked at Century, I was part of, it's not the same sort of thing as this, but we felt like we were a group of family of sorts, all of us underwriters trying to write accounts in a recession, because that's when I became an underwriter in 2007. One of the worst times to write insurance for motor truck carriers that were 10 units or less, or 20 units or less, which they were going out of business. We routinely helped our fellow underwriters out, you know, from anything, from illness to maternity leaves. We would pick up anything from two to 10 agencies in a day, just helping our entire group, because, you know, we wanted our transportation unit to succeed. And it was tough for a while there. It was rough watching our, our motor carriers go out of business and then we lose business. You know, it was a bad, it was bad times. And so we would group together and, and do whatever we could to figure things out and try to stay profitable, but still write as much business as we could. A lot of us worked weekends, nights. I remember working until 6:00 or 7:00 PM a lot of the time, because that was my life back then. Work was my life. And, and then when I worked in compliance and forms, it was a different sort of a team, but we were instrumental to doing the system testing for our new underwriting system. And so that was, you know, we had to get together as a group and we had to proofread every single insurance form that was coming out of the system and make sure every single word was perfect. And that took a lot, a lot of coordination, a lot of eyesight, a lot of effort. And then I think the most recent experience would be, I'm working in this group, is working for the Point Fellowship. I was, the last six, eight months, I was the only representative of our church, so unfortunately I didn't have a group, but I had to work with the Fondleec people. And so they kind of became, I had to meet them and learn who they were and work with them and all while I was learning this new position. And they were very helpful to me and that was exciting to meet people from a different community, but shared the same beliefs and ideas, so, yep, that's it.
Okay.
I'm there.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. Sorry. Sean.
I have one.
Nope, that, that works out fine.
As an Alder person, you are an elected official. And as that-
As an alderperson, you are an elected official. And as that, you will also make decisions that some people do not like. And as we've seen some from our meetings as well, some of those people can be very vocal, loud, and they're right here. You're face-to-face with them as well. They will not, some people, some people will not just be vocal here, but they'll have op-eds. You might be attacked in a, you might be attacked on Facebook as well, you might end up getting trolled. There might be op-eds that name you as well, trying to make you change the votes that you have. This doesn't happen often, but it does. And they will accuse you of being things and doing things and so on. My question for you is, how are you going to deal with this? Because it will happen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I lost track.
I lost track.
Isn't Sarah, okay. Sorry, I'm trying to deal with this, and it's frustrating.
So, I think all of us coming into that kind of understand that's an issue. Like I said, I've read the Facebook posts, the comments. It's not very nice. Have to have thick skin to do something like this. Again, I knew that coming in. The way I would deal with it is, you just have to know you're not going to please everybody. Try not to read the comments if they're about you, which sometimes easier said than done. But I feel like I would hope the tide could turn if people and citizens of Stevens Point feel like, hey, you know, they're actually listening to me, and my voice is being heard. Maybe it could be toned down. But again, I think that's something we all kind of realize is just a part of, you know, the position, putting yourself out there. You're, you're going to get those types of comments and that.
I do understand that you're not going to make everybody happy. I was sitting in this meeting, and it got loud, and we got to, I think, 1 o'clock in the morning one time. And I was proud of the council, even though I wasn't on their side for it, that they stuck to their opinions and the way that they wanted to go. They didn't let anybody bully them around. That's what I feel that this position needs to have, but it also needs to have respect, where you're listening to that person. You're trying to understand where they're coming from, trying to make the effort to do your best for it. But there's going to be bad days, and it's just sucking it up and just having to get through it.
I've been in that situation before, where people don't like you. I've been an underwriter, and a lot of times, your agents or your insurers don't like you because you can't give them the price that they want. They don't deserve the price that they want, part of the time. But, you know, sometimes there's little things you can do to compromise, and sometimes there isn't, and you just have to stick to it, so.
I played at Northwestern in the 90s, so we didn't win any games, so there was a lot of criticism. I understand that probably comes with, with the position. Also, I think that it's probably important, and I've always taken the stance that we win or lose as a team. I wouldn't blame anyone else if something didn't go well in my, if I was elected or appointed. If something didn't go well in my district, I wouldn't be out there pointing fingers at you guys. And I think that's also important, because in this time, where information, whether true, false, or heavily opinionated, it's, it's available online right away. So, and there's real people involved, including us, right, or you guys? So, yeah, I won't be intimidated, and you do your best. I don't even say you do your best to make everybody happy, because you have to do your best as a representative for the district, and that may make a lot of people unhappy, the majority unhappy. So, I, you know, happy is a very subjective term, and I think you all have an objective role with some subjectivity included in that, so.
Okay, we're good. At this point, before we go to voting, I'm going to ask if there's any members of the public that wishes to comment on the, the process. So, yes, go ahead, Ron. I'm going to try and get this figured out.
I'm the six-month alderperson for the sixth district, so I'd love to be sitting back up here, but health, health issues cause a different decision to be made. I just want to tell you all, the biggest problem you'll see, at least in the sixth district, is speeders in the neighborhood and property maintenance issues. And then, of course, the Business 51 thing, there was a lot of feedback about that. But great district, great people living there, things will go good. You're not going to have all the haters, at least I didn't have all the haters. And the other thing I want to tell you, I'm overjoyed that there's four people going for this position. That says a lot. It takes a lot to stand up and be counted. We need more involvement in the city, like you folks have shown. So, I, I hope this is a spreading thing. I hope we get more people come springtime running and just being involved. I don't know the other three candidates, and I apologize for that, but I have known one candidate for over 40 years, and that's my daughter, Sarah. And I want to be clear, I didn't try to influence her, I didn't urge her to do this, but I am proud as heck of her for stepping up and wanting to do this. She's made me proud all her life. This is just another thing that makes me prouder. She's a good listener, she's a problem solver, and she's a very open-minded individual. Even with her dad, I didn't always get my way in, in discussions that we had. And yes, I had three daughters growing up. That's why I have no hair, because I had three daughters. I just want to tell you that she, whoever's picked, I just know Sarah, so she's going to serve the residents of this sixth district well, and I just ask that you give her the opportunity to do that. Thank you very much.
Is there anything else from the public wishing to speak? Okay, then what we'll do is, we'll have the clerk hand out ballots and pens. I think your initials are probably fine on the ballots, and then the name of the candidate that you wish to select a sixth district. Can I have you go through your names one more time? Start with Sarah.
Cindy Flaherty, and I made a name with Ashburn.
Jason Barrett. So, first name, last name, whatever you can remember, and the clerk?
Oh, they have the name on the ballot.
Oh, look at that. Just have to check up our.
Isn't it perfect? Yeah. That's pretty wild.
Are we supposed to put our initials? Is that right?
Initials, name, whatever, whatever you like.
Thank you.
You know, when Cory did it, he just had blank pieces of paper.
We're way better.
Overshot the mark, set the bar much higher. Once they're done, the clerk will go through and collect them, and the clerk and our deputy treasurer will count the ballots audibly at the lectern.
Mr. Mayor, what's the procedure as far as if no one has the majority, the bottom vote getter?
The bottom vote, the bottom two vote getters will be eliminated.
Bottom two?
Take it down to two.
We go straight to two?
No. Is that okay?
That, no, that's fine. I just was curious.
This is your process, so.
And if, and if it's a tie, then we could potentially have three if, if the vote getters were tied?
You just alternate every.
Yes. No, no, you could have a tie.
If there's a tie for second, you're grabbing on. A tie for second.
You could have a tie for first.
We've been there, actually, where it required a switch of votes.
Sarah.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see, so one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine. So, you'd need five votes the first time around.
It's cold in here.
Yeah.
To hit the majority.
I'm very nigh, I think.
You're nervous. Try and fix a livestream on a video. It's been almost eight years since I've had to do any significant IT. I did, I did.
That's why part of the.
I'm on it. I re, yeah, I ran the update, I rebooted, and we're, we're going to start here again shortly.
Great discussion that was.
Well, the problem is, we've got any number of people using the machine, and every time I come in here, the settings changed.
Right.
And I don't know why. And this isn't the first time that video lock thing has happened, but it seems to be a common enough problem. Sometimes it's, what's that?
Are there different portals?
You need to gab all over there.
No, because these are hardware settings, because we have, it's not just like sitting on my laptop on a Zoom. We have wires going into the router.
Do you have a reason?
We're ready? Okay. We'll deal with the IT stuff in a bit.
Okay, we had David Plaissants, five, Sarah with three, and Jason with one.
Okay, so we have five votes. That is the majority. That's more than 50%. So, the new alderperson for the sixth district is David. Now, David, now I need you, thank you, everyone, seriously, for applying.
Yes, thank you.
And coming in here and taking more than an hour and a half out of your evening.
And it was a difficult choice, so.
And, and those interested in running, of course, in April, we can take out papers in December. The clerk will help you with that, if that's something you're interested.
I think since we couldn't have five or six, right?
Right. David, what I need you to do right now is, I need you to step to the lectern and get sworn in.
Mr. Mayor, can we have a hand of applause for all four?
Yes, yes, yes.
Is the council adjourned? We're still going.
We are.
We are.
For three.
I, David Plaissants.
Who has been elected.
Excuse me, can we get some quiet in here, please? This is a big deal.
By the common council.
By the common council.
To the office of sixth district alderperson.
To the office of sixth district councilperson.
For the term effective November 14th, 2022.
For the term effective November 14th, 2022.
And expires April 17th, 2023.
And expires April, what was it?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, 2023, thank you.
In the city of Stevens Point.
In the city of Stevens Point.
County of Portage.
County of Portage.
Wisconsin.
Wisconsin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
The Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you all.
Take care. Take care, Ron.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
This is all we have for the rest of the committees.
Did he come on up?
No, but we're not done yet, so when, when the alderperson's left, that's on them. Item number three is the appointment, mayoral appointment for the sixth district alderperson to the Finance Committee, Order of Public Works, Bicycle and Pedestrian Street Safety Committee, and Municipal Court Oversight Committee. Those are the same committees that were vacated with the resignation of alderperson Carlson. And for the sake of simplicity, we're making those same appointments for the next four months. They will be all subject to reorganization after the April elections. Need a motion to that effect.
I'll move to approve those.
I second. Moved by Dalton, seconded by Morrow. Discussion there. Hearing non-clerk, would you please call the roll?
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson is excused. Do you want the sixth district now?
Uh, let's hold off on that.
Nibon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Yeah, I don't think there was, there's a, a big issue. There we go. All right. Maybe, maybe we're set. With that, our agenda is exhausted, and we are adjourned at 7:25.